I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of July the 16th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Here.
Imocation and pledge to be conducted by Commissioner Highlander with all police rights.
Thank you. Thank you. It is my privilege to introduce First Reader Nancy Harrison, First Church of Christ Scientist, who will give our prayer, and then I will lead us in the pledge. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for all the work that you do. In addition to being First Reader of my church, I'm also a volunteer chaplain for the Chattanooga City Police. The prayer I'm going to share with you today is one that all Christians know well. It's the Lord's Prayer. The words that we use are taken from Matthew, so we say debts and debtors. I'm going to share this through the lens, however, of Christian Science. I'll be reading from the Christian Science textbook, a book called Science and Health with Key to the Scriptures, written by Mary Baker Eddy. Our master taught his disciples one brief prayer, which we name after him, the Lord's Prayer. Our master said, "After this manner, therefore pray ye." And then he gave that prayer which covers all human needs. There is indeed some doubt among Bible scholars whether the last line is not in addition to the prayer by a later copyist, but this does not affect the meaning of the prayer itself. In the phrase, "Deliver us from evil," the original properly reads, "Deliver us from the evil one." This reading strengthens our scientific apprehension of the petition. For Christian Science teaches us that the evil one, or one evil, is but another name for the first lie and all liars. Only as we rise above all material sensuousness and sin can we reach the heaven-born aspiration and spiritual consciousness, which is indicated in the Lord's Prayer, and which instantaneously heals the sick. Here, let me give what I understand to be the spiritual sense of the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, our Father, Mother, God, all harmonious, hallowed be thy name, adorable one. Thy kingdom come; thy kingdom is come. Thou art ever present. Thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Enable us to know, as in heaven, so on earth. God is omnipotent, supreme. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us grace for today; feed the famished affections. And forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors. And love is reflected in love. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. And God leadeth us not into temptation, but delivereth us from sin, disease, and death. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. For God is infinite, all power, all life, truth, love, over all and all. My prayer for you today is that the Lord bless you now and ever, and that the divine intelligence of God guide you in all your decisions. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. Chairman, if you'll indulge me for just a minute, I'd like to get before the pledge, I'd like to do an additional prayer, if I could, for Mrs. Shipley. My dear Lord, we thank you for the prayer that we've just received. We also ask your special blessings and special healing, Lord, and give strength giving for Mrs. Dede, and bless Gino as he worked for her. And I ask that implore this body, also, everyone in our county, to pray for this sweet lady in Christ's name. Amen. Please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Highlander. Have no presentations today. We'll move forward to minutes. Minutes needing entered and recorded for the recess meeting on June the 25th, 2025, the agenda session, June the 25th, 2025, and the regular meeting for July the 2nd, 2025. I'll be the will of the commission. Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded that motion. No lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Yes. We'll also have one report that needs to be entered into the record. Mr. Clerk?
Will do.
That will begin resolutions. We'll begin with Resolution 725-10. So, Madam Clerk, you read the captions.
Resolution 725-10, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, and the oath of deputy sheriffs.
Will be the will of the commission?
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Baker made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no one standing for comment, or no lights are on, so roll call.
Mr. Baker? Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 725-10 passes 725-11.
Resolution 725-11, a resolution to reappoint two members to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning July 16th, 2025, and ending July 16th, 2027. This will reappoint Joe Legee and Cora Taylor.
Will be the will of the commission?
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Beck made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded that motion. See no lights on for comment, no one standing for discussion, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. 725-11 passes. 725-12.
Resolution 725-12, a resolution to appoint a regular member to the Hamilton County Industrial Development Board to fill the unexpired term of Sylvester Harris. This will appoint Ruben M. Taylor.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Beck made the motion. Mr. Graham seconded that motion. See no lights on for discussion, no one standing for comments or discussion, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 725-12 passes, 725-13.
Resolution 725-13, a resolution approving the deviation from the county's discretionary funds policy as to the appropriating of funds to the nonprofit organization, United Action Alliance, as made by the Commissioner from the 5th District in the amount of $1,419.29.
Move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Mackey made the motion. Commissioner Shipley seconded that motion. See no lights on for comment, got one person standing. Need you to name the address, please.
Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. Just curious, nothing to come after Commissioner Mackey or anybody else, but I'm just curious on what this business is. I tried looking it up last night quickly, and I was up until like 2:00 a.m. studying, gentlemen. So I'm just curious what exactly this alliance is and for. Seems pretty cheap, I'm sure we're getting our value, I'm just curious.
Okay. Mr. Beck?
United Community Action Alliance, a nonprofit, actually works with seniors and young people and moms, which is mothers murdered sons.
And then for the $1,000, I'm just curious on what exactly that's going towards for that. It sounds great. Again, I just tried to do a search on it last night, I couldn't find it, so I just figured I'd ask.
It was something that's already been appropriated, and been the discretionary funds has already been refunded to the Commissioner.
So we're pulling the money back in, or we're sending the money out to this alliance?
It's already gone out.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, they, so they help, are they based here? And I'm just like the who, what, when, where, why of a company, I'm just curious on what that is. I know it's been appropriated in the past, but a lot of things are appropriated in the past.
It's a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
I'd be happy.
Do you have a website for them?
I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Okay.
In detail.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Let's see us when it's over.
Okay, thank you. See no one else standing, and no more lights are on. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. 725-13 passes, 725-14.
Resolution 725-14, a resolution to confirm the appointment by the county mayor of Rebecca Bohannon as Administrator of the Hamilton County Health and Social Services Division.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Graham made the motion. Commissioner Shipley seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing? All right, Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm certainly pleased to see that this has all been worked out, and that the Commissioner of Health has appointed Ms. Bohannon to this position. Attorney Varnell, I want to thank you for chasing this down for us. I plan to work closely with Ms. Bohannon if ever she feels the need to ask. Public health is obviously a great concern in all communities, particularly for myself, particularly after I read this morning in the Times Free Press that about 173,000 Tennesseans will be kicked off of their health care in the next year. I suspect that the Health Department will be seeing more people. And I think that Ms. Bohannon is up for that task. I'm kind of curious about this, like, I'm not really sure about this vote on this resolution. To me, as it is an appointment by the Commissioner of Health, I guess my question is is whether or not this is just a performative vote, do we have any authority on this matter? And Chairman, I'm not sure where to ask that question.
I can answer, this resolution is just to confirm the appointment, so it's not, we're not appointing anybody, we're just saying we confirm that the appointment has, process has been.
Yeah, I guess my question was, do we have the authority to do that, is that?
We got the authority to confirm anything.
Okay.
Because we're not actually, we're not actually saying do or don't do it.
Even if this is voted down, it's still confirmed. Okay.
This is us being in unison, saying that we are confirming what's been done, so.
Acknowledging what's been done, so should it be acknowledging or confirming? I don't know, and I'm really not trying to be difficult, I'm just curious. Is that because I know some of us had questions about that, and if we landed on the word confirm, if that's the appropriate word? Is that accurate?
Attorney Varnell, does confirm or acknowledge, does it legally have any difference?
In my opinion, I don't think the nomenclature really matters. If the rule of this, the will of this body is to acknowledge, and that's cleaner, then we can certainly amend the resolution to say acknowledge rather than confirm.
Commissioner Sharp, would you like to amend to acknowledge?
Well, if the attorney feels that's the appropriate action, then I would make that motion.
Okay.
Okay. And then I guess we have to vote on that, and there's one other comment that I wanted to make prior to, so I don't know, Chairman, if you want me to do that before the vote or after the vote?
Let's do this, so you made a motion, and Commissioner Smith seconded that motion. So we got a motion to change the one word from confirm to acknowledge. Any other comments?
Who said? Oh, well, sure, the only other comment, and it's not really pertinent to this particular resolution, I just wanted to acknowledge as we were, as I was studying, and I'd sent this out to everyone, it's an Attorney General's opinion from 2021, in question five, I just wanted to read into the record the comment from the AG is that a county mayor may not remove a county health officer without the permission of the Commissioner of Health unless law, i.e. a private act, gives the county mayor the power to do so. And that comment is in reference, I guess, also to the power to appoint, and I just wanted to read that into the record, Chairman, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Highlander?
Very briefly, Chairman, thank you. I also wanted to commend, he stole, Commissioner Sharp stole some of my thunder, I want to thank Attorney Varnell for her diligence and research, I think I've already sent her an email thanking her for that, but I also want to thank Commissioner Baker and the committee that worked on making this choice. Commissioner Baker's background, we all have varied backgrounds on this, from this dice. I mean, I look at Mr. Chauncey and think about real estate, and Mr. Smith, and computers, and different ones, and, but the hospital background that Commissioner Baker has, I think is really instrumental, and helped me make my decision and my understanding on this. I will thank the whole committee, but especially Commissioner Baker. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Baker?
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I'd like to also thank Commissioner Sharp for letting me get involved with this committee. For the last probably six months, been working with Shannon Berger, CEO of Sempa, to go over the numbers. Chief was very instrumental in that. He also was working with Don Muller, who's the CEO of Siskin Children's Institute, and we came together last Friday to kind of do a final thing, final discussion, and Becca, you did wonderfully. One of the cool things that's going to come out of this, and I was over at Earlinger yesterday talking to the CEO, and she's going to create a small, helpful advisory committee, which I think will do nothing but make this all that much better. So I'm excited about that, but I just wanted to say thank you, Becca, for working with us and through this with us, and I'm excited to vote for your approval.
Okay, see no more lights here, and before I go to Mr. Jones here, just want to make something clear. We're not acknowledging the appointment of a health officer, this is an administrator. So just want to make sure we're clear on that. Okay. All right. Name the address, please.
Just record it. Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. For this committee, when is the next meeting? This committee that you are approving the three people that are on it? When is the next health meeting?
Are you talking about the committee that I was on?
The health, PR, parks, recs, arts committee that these people are advisory towards, right? That's.
Well, those are all different committees. In this case, it was specifically focused on the Health Department, particularly on the numbers and the organization and the mission.
When is the next meeting?
There is not, there is no more. This was to go through prior to the selection of the administrator who is being selected today.
Gotcha. No, I get, I understand that, I know what this is, what's happening, I'm just curious because I was looking for when the last meeting was, when the next meeting is, given that our country, as an average, is 40.3% obese, and that doesn't include overweight, so I think there's a health crisis. The administration says there's a health crisis. I'm just curious on when the next health meeting is.
What I would recommend that you do is meet with administrator and talk to her about your concerns, because I think she would probably align with those, as well as a multitude of other issues that are going to be covered by the Health Department.
But what's the point if there's, you set the meeting, correct?
No, she's in charge.
The Health Committee is not appointed by anybody up here?
Oh, we do have a Health Council, I don't know who's on it, but I would, more specifically, I would talk to the administrator.
Well, the guy voting, the people, the men voting up here, I feel like should be informed of whatever health crisis is currently going on, and not pass the buck, in my humble opinion.
We will be, I mean, we, as you can recall, about five years ago, there was a thing called COVID that we were integrally involved with.
Oh, yes.
So she.
Yes, I'm well aware, it's what woke me up, and a lot of other people, that's why I'm here, sir.
I'm with you, so yeah. But I would give her your ideas, and I'm sure she'll take those to her new organization and her advisory committee, and.
I'll start a grassroots movement, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. See, no more lights, no one else standing. We're voting on the amended resolution to amend by changing the word confirm to acknowledge, is that correct? Okay. Commissioner Sharp made the motion, Commissioner Smith seconded that motion, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Back on the main motion now, Mr..
Back on the main motion, so we're 725-14. We'll do a roll call as amended.
As amended. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So 725-14 passes as amended. We will do. We have several guests in our presence. A lot of our judges, would any of y'all like to say anything before we move on to the next resolution? We are. Good deal.
Can't hear.
Got to come up to the mic. Sorry, Your Honor.
Judge, you're out of order.
I always wanted to say that, I always wanted to say that.
Well done. I'm Judge Christie Sella, General Sessions Court, and I just wanted to commend what Becca Bohannon has done for our county, and I just want that recognized, not just in her new role, but what she has done for us in our recovery court from the beginning, and she just deserves to be commended for that, and I'm excited for our county for what she'll do for our health. So, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Becca, do you want?
Absolutely.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commission, and all of my friends here, it seems like. I'm incredibly humbled and grateful to be before this body. Thank you, Mayor Womp, for this appointment. As a matter of fact, Christie Cooper and the Honorable Judge Lila Statham, and former Mayor Coppinger, were the original ones who brought me to the county in 2021, and I'm forever indebted to you for believing in me then. I am indebted to the mayor, this body, Chief Roddy, Administrator Ellis is somewhere here, for believing in me this go-around. Commissioner Baker, thank you for last week's meeting, and it was incredibly insightful to see everything, and I'm super excited about this. We have a lot of health services representatives here today, y'all, I'm excited. Now is when the fun begins, and I'm just incredibly humbled to be before this body today. Attorney Varnell, thank you in your office for your work, my family who's watching, I know, somewhere. I'm just really grateful and really honored, and this is an exciting era for health services in Hamilton County. There's so many cool opportunities before us, but to all of the judges that are here, you guys not only have been great colleagues, but great friends, and everyone in Hamilton County is indebted to your honorable service daily from the bench. So thank you all, and Sean Johnson, of course, thank you for being here. Chairman, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I would like to say something as well. I wanted to thank Chief Roddy and Mayor Womp for appointing me as interim, and he knows that I was pushed out of my comfort level, and that's why I wanted to come up here and say it took a team to maintain the operations of the Health Department. And that team consisted of Chief Roddy, the administrators, and more importantly, every employee at the Health Department, and the leadership, and that's why they're here today. We've got the health officer, Dr. Stephen Miller, Director of Environmental Health Services, Ryan Bryan, Dr. Thomas over dental services, Director Wendy Shepherd over clinical service, Director Angie Gonzalez over case management services, and Director Karen Gwynn over homeless healthcare services, and Director Crystal Howard over community health services. And we're in full support, and we're excited, and we are, I think we all could exhale. Once we, once we knew who the appointment was, so we're ready, and we're ready for the change, and the same support that was extended to me will definitely be extended to Rebecca, Becca as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, could we get a revised resolution with the new wording?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've got an expert attorney, Varnell.
Thank you.
I will get that for you. Thank you, Attorney Varnell. Okay, with that, we'll move into finance.
Very well, Mr. Show, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, moving into 725-28, please. Oh, sorry, I jumped.
dash twenty-eight, please. Oh, sorry. I jumped all the way down. Sorry. That's what happens when you're electronic sometimes. Seven twenty-five dash fifteen, sorry.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution to allocate the use of proceeds from the 2024 A bond issue of up to $1 million for various community recreation projects.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jobb. I'll comment. I know we commented on this last week. Just again, thank you very much to the mayor and all those that were involved in putting this together. This is going to mean a tremendous amount for a lot of our smaller municipalities that were able to take advantage of this. Ms. Akuf, the city manager of Lakeside, my area is one of those. Thank you for being here and supportive of this. Very excited to see how that project works. And just again, thank you very much for everybody that was involved in helping make this happen. I truly appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
No lights, no one standing. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, ever so.
Yes. Seven twenty-five dash fifteen passes.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, seven twenty-five dash sixteen, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a contract in the amount of $60,000 with the City of Chattanooga for the Hamilton County Court's Community Service Program with a term beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. Mr. Highlander?
I especially want to thank this group for the mayor and all, all involved. Our trash pickup is horrible in our county. And, and I'll say not trash pickup, but the trash is horrible. And I very much appreciate any efforts that we can make on it. And I encourage our citizens to try and be careful and not throw the trash out. Try to pick it up, please, across the county. We want it, we want to keep our county beautiful. We have the most beautiful county in the world. Please don't trash it up. And thank you for all your help, Mayor.
See no more lights, no one standing for comment. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Seven twenty-five sixteen passes.
Thank you, sir. Without objection, Madam Clerk, let's bundle seven twenty-five dash seventeen and eighteen, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to apply and accept a grant from the Tennessee Statewide School Resource Officer Grant Program with details to be provided at a later date. Resolution seven twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution with the intent to apply for a grant for the humane transport of patients from the Mental Health Transport Program for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. See no lights on for comment, no one standing. Roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Seven twenty-five dash one seven, seven twenty-five dash one eight passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Without objection, let's bundle seven twenty-five dash nineteen and dash twenty, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division operating as the Hamilton County Health Department to sign a continuation contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $338,600 to provide tuberculosis control services in Hamilton County for a time period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division operating as the Hamilton County Health Department to enter into and execute a contract with Renaissance Health and Renaissance Life and Health Insurance Company of America for the provision of dental services effective November 1st, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Shipley seconded that motion. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. Just briefly, I'll say, my grandfather died from tuberculosis in 1980. My grandmother and I both contracted it while, while dealing with him, and it is making a worldwide comeback. And I appreciate our Health Department making, making a stand and taking care of, of the people that are involved in this. It's, it's easily stopped if we recognize it early on. And you, you can, they have medicine that can encapsulate it and prevent it from spreading at all. But I, I very much personally, having been involved in this, I very much appreciate our Health Department's efforts in, in this. It is making a worldwide comeback, and we don't want it to make a comeback in, in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Shipley?
Yes, that is, thank you, Sonya Cor. Ever since you filled in in this position, every morning you come here, spoke, presented something. It's always been to me, perfect presentation. And I know you didn't want to move up. Thank you for all you done. And, and I think you're a special person in what you do.
Ms. Sonya, thank you. Okay. Name and address, please.
Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. First, I know COVID happened. Second, when it comes to the health professionals, I'm not coming at you. I promise you, I'm not. I'm just asking questions, and taxpayers have questions, and it's just things that I can speak to. I've deployed many times. I've had tuberculosis under the skin. I don't even know how many times at this point. I know I've been in the room with people that have tuberculosis, close quarters, putting hands on them, things like that you do overseas. So I'm just curious, when Tennessee has, I think, 1.2 million dollars to distribute out to different cities across Tennessee, $338,000 going towards prevention, which, of course, we need prevention, I would be curious to have the conversation of why it's spreading around the world right now. And yeah, that seems big and geopolitical, but I think fundamentally, we should be asking that in every community. But two, is there records? I, I went to the CDC website last night. When was the last tuberculosis outbreak? How many instances have happened over the last 10 years? Is it consistent? Where is it consistent? Like, getting to the root of the problem, because it just feels like $338,000 for a problem like tuberculosis in 2025 seems like overkill, especially if the cases aren't popping up. Is the return on value, like, is that money from Tennessee worthwhile on tuberculosis when maybe other cities need it? Hamilton County seemed to have lower, like, I got a lot of questions. It's just like simple things that I think every citizen should be asking about every single line item that we're approving or not approving or amending or not amending. So tuberculosis, how many happen in Hamilton County?
I think what we're, we're, we're looking at a resolution here, and I'll answer this, to where the state is going to be funding us $338,000 to perform the service. So that would be a question you need to ask the state, because the state is funding this. And there's, there's a criteria that they give each county to be able to apply for those grants. So statewide tuberculosis, I don't know what the counts are.
But it's $338,000 for this county, correct? How many tuberculosis cases have happened over the last 10 years in Hamilton County? And what does that trend line look like? Because if we're taking that money
This is about prevention, though.
I, I understand it's about prevention, but if you're over preventing and spending too much time and resources on a thing that's not an actual problem, maybe we could reallocate funds or find other places that maybe need it more.
That's a great point.
Just being more efficient, more efficient with it all.
That's a great point, but the state tells us where these dollars go. So we, we can't move them to other spots. The state pretty much
So do you not care about how many tuberculosis?
Absolutely, we care. But this is, this is about
Question, how many have happened in here in Hamilton County?
This is about prevention. And this is what the state is funding.
Then how are you spending? I, I understand that. It's just, it, when someone sees $338,000 for a problem, that doesn't seem to be that big of a problem in the modern, modern age. And if it's not really popping up here in Hamilton County, that money seems to be not as useful. And I understand we're, I don't, how are we preventing tuberculosis in the community?
I think your question more relates to the state. The state is once telling us that this is money is available for Hamilton County. So the state is who's funding it. So not, not the county.
So I guess, last question, and I'll leave it alone.
Okay.
So is it just like in a, is the money sitting in the state's bank account? And then when tuberculosis happens, there's just, there is not a credit card, but a bank account with specific funds towards tuberculosis when you need it? Or is it just, here's $338,000 for prevention?
Would you, would you like to come up?
It would be nice to be on the record.
Wendy Shepherd, Director of Clinical Services, and TB is under my jurisdiction. $338,000 is not enough to run our TB program. We're gracious that the state gives us that. I don't have the direct numbers, but last year we had eight or nine TB cases. These are people that have to, once they're diagnosed with TB, we have to observe them taking the medication twice a day. They could be on medication for six months. So if you think about the four staff that are, the only four staff that are on this budget, they do a lot of things for that amount of money. So I'd like to talk to you afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Time's expired. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, see no more lights. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. So seven twenty-five dash nineteen and seven twenty-five dash twenty passes. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. The concern raised by Mr. Jones, I think it's legitimate. The federal government is pushing programs down to the state level, like funding for food and school programs. But they're not sending enough money. And so it gives them cover to say, well, it's on the states. But, you know, historically, you know, it's groups like Republicans have believed that you should have a strong federal government and weak state governments. But this administration has given power over to the states, but not enough resources, like kids in, in, in my district, maybe not yours. They're going to go hungry, because money is not coming forward, not enough money. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Got seven twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Okay, moving on. Madam Clerk, without objection, let's bundle seven twenty-five dash twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resolution accepting the bids of Tally Construction Company, Inc., and Wright Brothers Construction Company, Inc., for one-year contract unit pricing with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms, beginning August 1st, 2025, through July 31st, 2026, for in-place hot-mix asphalt services for highway and various county departments, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution. Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Tinker Mount LLC for design of the Gateway Career Technical Education Building renovation for an amount not to exceed $1,593,014.37. Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with MTA Architecture and Planning for Design of the Saudi Daisy Middle School Renovations and Additions for an amount not to exceed $1,902,848.
Made the motion. Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing. Roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Seven twenty-five twenty-one, seven twenty-five twenty-two, and seven twenty-five twenty-three all pass.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hilton? I'm sorry, there's two more.
Yep.
Two more for the end.
Madam Clerk, now we're down to seven twenty-five dash twenty-eight, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution to appropriate up to $2,250,000 in bond funds to the Hamilton County Schools pending school board approval for the construction of a multipurpose building at McConnell Elementary and a playground partnership project at Hardy Elementary in collaboration with the Trust for Public Land.
Second. Mr. Beck made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. As with the previous item, again, just a great deal of gratitude going out to the mayor's office for putting this together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tucker? Tucker, thank you. You and I were in communication about this a lot in trying to bring this forward and to fruition. And I appreciate you indulging me in all my questions and pestering. I really do appreciate everything that you've done to make sure that this took place. So with that, sir, I will be very happy to support this moving forward.
Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm going to support this resolution. I was just curious. It just occurred to me, is this 2.25 million dollars, is this coming out of the $60 million that we had set aside for maintenance issues, or is this out of a different pot of bond money?
Lee?
Yes, these funds will be coming out of the 60 million set aside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. See no more lights, no one standing for comment. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Seven twenty-five twenty-eight passes.
Madam Clerk, moving on. Seven twenty-five dash twenty-nine, please.
Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution to appropriate in an amount not to exceed $850,000 from the Hamilton County Roads Improvement Capital Projects Fund to improve and repair Sam Pao Trail Road.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Brandon, gave me a call the other day, Chief Roddy gave him a call the other day, the mayor for approving this. It's only been like one day. I was there yesterday, and it's such, it's like 1,000% better. And all I've done is taken out all the bumps and filled in some little holes as they fix it. And it's, I mean, it's amazing. So I just want to say thank you. It's long time overdue and greatly appreciated.
Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This may be a finance question also. I don't know. The capital, Hamilton County Roads Improvement Capital Project Fund, how is that funded?
Lee?
In last year's budget, we moved 5.8 million dollars into a capital project fund. So it came from the general fund, and it's being held currently in the capital projects fund for projects similar to this.
So it's rainy day money? Is that, that came from the, the fund balance?
Yes, yes, from the general fund fund balance.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Lee.
Okay. See no more lights, no one standing. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, great use of the money.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Seven twenty-five dash twenty-nine passes.
Those are all our finance items, sir.
All right. So building and economic. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chair. Madam Clerk, could you read seven twenty-five dash twenty-four?
Resolution seven twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution to approve the firm of HK Architects for the design of the Brainerd High School renovations and additions, and utilize a construction manager at risk procurement process and contract for the construction.
Motion approved.
Mr. Beck made the motion. Commissioner Shipley seconded that motion.
Thank you.
No lights, no one standing. Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.[1776.08]
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. 725-24 passes. Move on to zoning. Commissioner Chauncey?
Thank you, Chairman. We have one item here. Madam Clerk, please read 725-25B, please.
Resolution 725-25B, a resolution to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District with conditions for the properties located at 2925 Sandry Lane and 2927 Dexter Lane.
I move to approve with conditions.
Second. Mr. Chauncey made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. Commissioner Hilton?
Could we have Mr. Schultz come to the microphone and talk about this? I wasn't here last week and I want to make sure and call it upon what's exactly happening.
Sure. Brian Schultz, RPA. That's why they just called me sure. You have an alternate version in your packet after discussion from last week? Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through the presentation or just go to the condition?
I'll let, I'll let Commissioner Hilton. You want to briefly go through it? It's probably got a minute, about 60 seconds, maybe? The faster you talk, the faster we'll get through, right?
At the end of the day, this is basically zoning request from A1 to R1 for roughly 3.6 dwelling units, I mean, 3.6 acres, 16 units. That's a density of 4.4 dwelling units per acre. Look at the zoning map. You do have a mixture of zones nearby from A1 to R1 to R2, which is single family in this area. Here's a quick aerial view. You can see his manufactured home to the south, surrounded by single unit residential, so this use would fit in with a budding property. I'll go through these pictures real quick. This is some of the homes that are nearby. This is Sandry Lane. This is a county road. It doesn't meet county standards as a public road in terms of width and probably compaction. And that'll come into play in a minute with one of the conditions. This is in the Wild Oak Mountain Area Plan, which is adopted in 2019. It recommends suburban residential, which is basically single-family detached dwellings. This is the site plan submitted with the request. You can see it's coming off Sandry Lane. Sandry Lane actually connects to Dexter Lane. It's like, like a, it also has two roads on it. But this is at the end of Sandry and you can see it's one cul-de-sac for 16 lots. Staff reviewed this request and felt it was compatible to land use plan and because a single unit residential, a budding single unit residential, developing under current zoning could be developed with like roughly nine units. Just wanting to double that by going to R1. There's some issues with that right of way. Appears to be some carport and some trees potentially in the right of way. Those will have to be removed if it is developed. The road is widened. So staff recommended deny because it's increasing the density along this road. There was no opposition at Planning Commission. Planning Commission felt the request was compatible to adopted plan and recommend to approve with one condition, improvement up to 20 feet of Sandry Lane, where Sandry Lane borders the property being developed. Last week we discussed, I think the developer agreed to widen Sandry Lane all the way down to Dexter Lane. So you have an alternate version in front of you that says, subject to the following condition, improvement up to 20 feet of Sandry Lane for the entire length of Sandry Lane from the site to the intersection of Sandry Lane and Dexter Lane. I have a... There's a picture. You can see Sandry Lane where it does connect to Dexter. So this condition, that's alternate version in your packet, would be to widen Sandry Lane to 20 feet all the way down to Dexter.
Okay. What about Dexter Lane? I mean, I've heard concerns on, about getting a fire truck down there. If we widen one, but we have a bottleneck on the road that feeds in. Were there any, did anybody talk about Dexter? It's, it's like 14 feet.
That was mentioned at the Planning Commission about widen, having this developer widen the entirety of Sandry Lane and Dexter Lane. That comes into question legality wise of can we make a developer widen?
Sure.
It's a county road, basically.
Okay.
But last week this developer did agree to widen a little bit further beyond his property.
Okay. What, could the applicant come up and talk about it? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joseph Ingram, Ingram Gore and Associates. So it's kind of dubious where Dexter and Sandry end, but the Dexter that's running east-west, I was out there after we had me last week and measured, and Dexter, we can get a fire truck down. That piece where it turns north, we're gonna have to widen that.
Could you speak in the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we will widen, so the north, where it makes the first L, make it the first right turn. We're gonna have to, we're gonna, we agreed to widen that. And then we're gonna widen and give the 20-foot right of way on that other piece that's running back east-west again. So we'll actually be widening in the existing 50-foot right of way on Sandry. And then we're, it makes that turn, we're gonna go ahead and just basically build a new road. Sandry Lane, it's, yeah, you can, you can probably pass a car. So we would widen, widen on the existing right of way off our property and then widen, give and give the 20-foot right of way, this piece that Brian's got up right now. That, obviously, that's just gotta be, that's gotta be made a county road.
Okay, well, I appreciate you. I'm always concerned on the emergency services access, so.
So they could, they, the trucks can get down Dexter, but that turn and turn, no.
Okay.
And so we're gonna, and so subdivision would be horrible. So we're gonna widen both, widen one and then give right of way and build a road.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Highlander?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I think I mentioned a little bit of it last week. Have we ascertained that we do have the right of way? Where, like I say, I'm looking at this carport, which is right on the road. Brian, do we know, do we have, do we on the right of way there?
The surveyor said no, he's gonna dedicate some additional right of way through there. The developer says he's gonna have to dedicate additional right of way on that section. Probably working with that property owner, without it being surveyed, there's no telling where that carport is. It looks like it's in the right of way.
Well, yeah, but we have to know for sure. So he's gonna designate on the other side of the right of way.
He'll have to designate enough right of way to make it meet 50 feet, which is county standard.
Thank you. That, that answered my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Shipley?
I got a crazy question. Is that a bear or a dog in that pit?
That is a puddle. Puddle?
I was looking at that too.
Pothole. I didn't take the picture, so I don't know, but you're right. It's a pretty big dog.
Well, you got to say it. I wouldn't get close.
I don't have any other questions, Chairman.
All right. Looks like we have someone from the public. Name and address, please.
Terry Yoder, Villateras. I was wondering about this because isn't that Plan Hamilton? And I thought it was tabled and I thought last week y'all tabled this area. But I don't remember, I don't remember y'all voting on it and I was curious what's going on with that.
On this piece of property? Or Plan Hamilton?
Is this part of Plan Hamilton area?
Well, whole county's a part of Plan Hamilton area. This, this is, this is.
District nine and 10.
Well, this, well, this is for the whole county. Plan Hamilton was designed for the whole county. What we're doing is we're talking about a zoning request change. It has nothing to do with Plan Hamilton. So I don't know. I guess, Commissioner Chauncey, this has nothing to do with Plan Hamilton. This has to do with the, Plan Hamilton didn't stop anything as far as, it's already been planned, so. Are you talking about the plat moratorium?
I know that there is people in District nine and 10. Is this just District nine and 10?
No, this, this is a part of the District seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. I, I mean, good question. I think this is just standard protocol. My question would be if RPA doesn't have, which I've already mentioned before, doesn't have studies on the studies and plans. It's just got pages and pages of plans. Is there a study for this neighborhood on, do they like this road being extended? I mean, I assume it is, but I was looking at that picture with the bear and/or dog. That person's property in their overhang, probably where they parked their cars, like right up on the edge there. How does that work with expanding the roads and how much on what side? How much on the other side? Has that been talked about at all, or?
I think Brian just mentioned it a few minutes ago, when Commissioner Highlander asked the question. You want, you want to re-explain what will have to happen there?
Yes, that road will have to be widened. Surveyor will go out and do survey work to make sure where that structure is actually located, if it's in the right of way or not, if it's on that person's property. He'll probably answer better than I can. They own on the other side of the road as well, so they can probably widen the road on that side. It's hard to tell. Do you get that, that point? We're not there yet. This is strictly the zoning. The zoning makes sense. You'll have to do subdivision plats once this is approved. So that will take place at that point.
I think he's asking, have there been any studies done?
We have land use plans. We have the Wild Oak Mountain Plan that recommends suburban residential. We have Plan Hamilton. There's all kinds of studies we have. So it's another question to answer here.
Okay. No, I mean, I think this is kind of part of the public record. Well, then, for the studies, have you asked, have you asked the people that live there on that street that are about to have this come through, like, hey, what's the feel if I bring 16 more neighbors or however many neighbors can live in 16 units?
It's part of zoning requests. We do not. Adjacent property owners, signs are put up. Letters are sent out. Nobody showed up at Planning Commission. Nobody's here today. I can't speak for them. Maybe the developer can speak. If he's talked to anybody, that's our process.
So every, every property owner that's adjacent to, that touches this property has been sent a letter?
Cool. I was just curious on how that works. And again, with the RPA, I would just strongly encourage to throw some studies or remove studies from your website. Thanks.
All right, see no one else standing? Roll call.
Mr. Baker?
So I learned last week, this is a friend of mine, so I'll have to abstain.
Mr. Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How do we code Dr. Mackey not being?
He said yes.
He said yes. Commissioner Mackey?
Legal procedure.
Mr. Mackey? You need to come up with an official. Your vote to count, you gotta be at the dice.
Go to that mic right there.
Go to the mic.
I said yes.
He couldn't hear you.
Good.
I voted yes.
Thank you. Per, per the rules, he's supposed to be on the dice, so. To vote. I guess the rule state, he's gotta be on the dice in order to vote to count. No, he's gotta be on, he's gotta be in the dice. So Commissioner Mackey, if you wouldn't mind, for your vote to count.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, people have not always been on the dice when they have voted, but I vote yes on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. Okay, 725-25B, Baker passes. With that, we'll move into announcements. Commissioner Shipley?
I just want to say thanks to everybody for the last week prayers from the wife and keep Brian. We need him. She's very sick.
Definitely. Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, Commissioner Shipley, just know that we are all there, have been there, will always be there for you. You're definitely in our prayers and thoughts and we love you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. No specific announcements, but as with everybody else, thoughts and prayers continued for Commissioner Shipley and Ms. Dede.
Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, like others, I also want to just stay in prayer for the Shipley family. And there were some of us who went to Saudi Daisy last summer, I think it was. And I told you, Gino, then, you dancing with your wife the way you did, I loved it and it will always be a strong memory for me.
Mr. Beck?
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for our friendship, Commissioner. And we're certainly praying for this situation. I've been there, as Commissioner said, and I have several friends that's been there. And prayer changes things. So thank you so much for your friendship and we certainly will be riding along with you during this whole process. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. The Sharp family will also continue to pray for the Shipleys and we'll pray, I'll pray, spontaneous healing. Gino, we're with you. Chairman, I hate to break from the moment, but there was one other thing that I wanted to mention in my time for announcements. As I quoted from the AG earlier in the meeting today, the sentence prior to the sentence that I quoted in the September 24th, 2021 AG opinion number 21-15 states, because the right of removal from office is an incident, incident to the right of appointment, when the tenure of an office is not prescribed by statute or the Tennessee Constitution, only the Commissioner of Health may remove a county health officer. Under that principle, the same would apply. The same would apply to a health director. I just wanted to say that for clarity. Thank you, Chairman.
May we have a copy of that AG opinion for the record? Thank you.
Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chair. Gino, we all love you. The friends of Appleson and East Brainerd are having a pancake breakfast on July 26. It lasts from 8:00 to 10:00. This month's breakfast is gonna be a little different. It's gonna be a benefit for a little girl who has cancer. She is the daughter of retired Chattanooga Fireman Ed Bradley. Policeman? Policeman, excuse me. I would encourage everyone to show up, enjoy a few pancakes and sausage and a little fellowship and see what we can do to help offset some of these medical bills for this family. Also, I'd like to wish happy birthday to my oldest daughter. She's 18 today. And, yeah. Anyway, that's it.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yeah.
Just, Chauncey family continues to send prayers for you and your beautiful wife, Dede. Mr. Shipley, we love you.
Mr. Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I have been praying and I will continue to, Commissioner. And I tell you what, a lot of us gentlemen married up and I know I did. And, but I tell you what, he, he's got a real sweet, wonderful wife and we just thank the Lord for her and just pray for her strength and for her healing. Another vein, I, you know, something's come up. Mayor, you, you've put some good folks in, in office here. Matt Foles has done a great job. But I tell you, Brendan Marocker has, golly, man, when we have a problem with the road, we call him and he has someone on it. Golly, man. I mean, countywide, I don't see how he does it, but, but he really does. I had, uh, I had a friend give me a brochure about a vacation Bible school and I can't announce every vacation Bible school in the county. There's so many. But one thing, this was on Hunter Road and I thought Hunter Road is dangerous and I thank the county for trying to make some innovations and some improvements on it. But as children are out of school and they're out playing in the yard, hopefully, they're, hopefully, they're out playing and not always on the computer for recreation. But please, I encourage people to be careful. Some of the subdivisions in my area have said, cars fly through there and children are playing in the yard. If they go out and chase a ball and a car is flying through a subdivision. If they go out and chase a ball and a car is flying through a subdivision at fifty miles an hour, they may not be able to avoid the child. Also, last night, I saw, coming back, going to Atlanta, I saw an eighteen wheeler that, that had a wreck with, uh, multiple, multiple cars that were just bashed in from an eighteen wheeler. And my daughter and I saw bodies being carried out, and a couple of them were children. And that just really hurt me, but I just beg people to be more careful on the road. One other thing, and forgive me for making so long, Chairman, but there was a, Karen Glenn was a wonderful lady that, uh, served as Director of the Stars, she was taking the right stance, some of you are familiar with that. She served as this director for several years until it was changed, and then she became a very valued employee of Hamilton County Department of Education, and was just a beautiful person inside and out. She dedicated her life to children, and Karen Glenn passed this week. And I would appreciate people remembering her and her, her service to this, to this community and to young people, and keep her family in your prayers, Karen Glenn, thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When, my whole life growing up, my mother always used to say, when we were praying to God for, for an issue that we had, good, bad, or ugly, my mother would always say, go storm heaven. So my whole life, my mother always said, storm heaven with prayers, storm heaven with prayers. So, Gino, to you and Dede and your family, Leticia and I and our family, we love you all to death, and we'll be storming heaven with prayers for you all. And if there's anything, anything at all we can do, I mean, I'll come mow your grass. I mean, if there's anything we can do, just give us a call, we're right there, and we'll do anything we possibly can to help you. And nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Attorney Barnell?
Give Dede my love, Gino.
Mayor Womp?
Chairman, just to clarify some of the business that we've discussed today. Both Janie Varnell and I spoke to the General Counsel and the now former Commissioner of Health. And even though this has been construed as something that was mishandled, I thought a clarification that you all would appreciate is the Commissioner himself and their General Counsel acknowledged errors on their website, some confusion post-COVID after the legislature changed laws affecting health departments. In fact, some of these laws were changed since Sabrina Novak had been appointed by Mayor Koppinger. They even said that the way that we were doing it, bringing a name forward, having them approved by commission, and then going on to the Commissioner of Health was, by interpretation, fine. Since we had time between last week and this week, the Commissioner of Health decided to respond proactively to Becca Bohannon's overwhelming qualifications for the position, and that's why we sent you all a memo clarifying the situation. And so that we all know, expectations moving forward, as they were communicated to both Janie and I, you know, the Commissioner of Health, the State Department of Health, has no desire to be searching for positions in these local health departments. They rely on the county mayor's office to bring a qualified person or two. State law says no more than three people. But what the Commissioner said is just, you know, we've relied on at the state, they've relied on county mayors to bring them a qualified person, and then they sign off on them, and there are other appointments and protocols that are similar to that that we follow, but I felt like that was an appropriate clarification. And then certainly, my friend Gino knows that I'm a big fan of his wife, who I often refer to as the queen of Sadi Daisy, and Dede is much like a second mom to me. And I was honored to talk to her a few days ago and think of her, and she knows that I'm at her beck and call. But we're all thinking about our friend Dede.
Okay. From the Chair, Commissioner Shipley, we ask for Heavenly Father to embrace you and your family over these coming days and weeks, that he keeps you in care and guides you and guides your family. Because there's no greater person than the Heavenly Father. To have you wrapped up. Amen. Couple of things, we have the Fall in Five Memorial that begins at eleven o'clock, so that the Commission's been invited to. And then, as a reminder from last week's meeting, there will be no Commission meeting next week on seven twenty-three due to it being a five Wednesday month. Our next meeting will be on the thirtieth at nine thirty AM. With that, we'll move to the public portion. Did you name an address, and you have three minutes?
Andrew Jones, six oh seven Timber Ridge Drive. I got a lot of questions, obviously. Oh, man, so I have three things I want to talk about. For those that were at the Lincoln Day Dinner, the Hamilton County GOP, Marjorie Taylor Greene was one of the keynote speakers, and, I mean, she just outrightly said it, that the Republican Party isn't doing well. I would say the same for the Democrat Party. But at the same time, they're both doing terrible. They say one thing, they campaign on one thing. They say to Fox News, they say to this, they rely on reporters to not do their job. People are pissed. People are really mad. When it comes to how I feel about what I am doing and what I'm going to continue to do, we should speak for folks, because I know if I have questions, other people have the same. Every teacher has said that, there is no stupid question, so here I am. But what it feels, what it feels like to me, if you, if I quote Jordan Davis, country singer, Damn Good Time, I would strongly encourage everyone here to listen to that song, and that's what I listened to on repeat this morning when I was coming in here, because this is, I've never had more fun in my life, staying up to one AM looking at rules and where our money's going. And then the last thing I'll say, which I think is the most important for sure, is nomenclature matters. What does nomenclature mean? Nomenclature refers to the system of set terms or names used in particular field, discipline, or community, especially in the scientific or technical context. It involves standardized naming of things, such as an organism in biology. So if we're going down to the biology level, chemical level, chemistry, homo sapiens would be nomenclature. When I was in the military and we had to go through the arms room, you would have a rifle, you would have a light, you'd have an optic, you might have an optic on top of your optic, you could have a nighttime laser, you'd have your night vision, you'd have your radio, maybe sometimes two radios, a shotgun. The amount of bullets you have. Name it, nomenclature. People lose their jobs when one piece of nomenclature goes missing. Even in combat. Protect your nomenclature, know your nomenclature, it's simple. Be transparent. I'm not here to come after anybody. I'm here to make this community better and focusing forward. I'm not focused on five years ago, and if you're going to sit here and insult me with COVID happened five years ago, well, you're looking in the past, pal. You're looking in the past. Be transparent. Be transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Monty Bale?
That would be me. Monty Bale, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox, the man with the trillion-dollar voice. Last time I was here, I was challenged by the person that plagiarized my immediate removal from office ouster to stand beside him and pledge allegiance to a flag. Impossible. And you plagiarized my immediate removal from office ouster, which was given to you first. Never been discussed here at the County Commission. I come in two weeks later and I'm morally surprised by a group of unattractive so-called men undressing me when I walk into your door, telling me to remove pieces of clothing to where I had to spend about six minutes asking a panel of men, are you gonna tell the women which piece of clothing they can't wear? Man, I'm so sick of you all, let me, let me get to this real quick. Education, that's my main thing, I love education, and that's something that you all seem to be afraid of. Appointing people to my wife, that's another impossibility. Let's go back with the time here, you speed my time up, but you got two hundred eleven billion, thirty-four million that you're going to have to pay me, because you've appointed someone by the name of Jenny S. Parker to my wife. She's illegitimate. Somebody you don't know, I'm reading your lips. My service was an E-four communication. I'm not going to let any of you take that. I'm telling you, I got a document here from the judge shopping hearings that you all can't seem to get away from that occurred in two thousand nine, twenty-ten. Tennessee Wildlife Resource Agency and the Chattanooga Police Department engaged in judge shopping. I defeated that case. You all have been appointing to the tune of almost a billion point five in taxpayer money prosecuting Monty Bale. Do you know we've got two or three docket numbers for the same case, just four or five steps up here, that you all refuse to even Google to find the truth? Open records request non-compliance. Again, two hundred eleven billion, thirty-four millions for your fraud on the entire eleven, that's all of you. All the way up to your governor and his counsel, your CPD, your police, your Hamilton County Sheriff deputies, it encompasses all of you. But last but not least, I didn't come here, but a question was asked of your new county attorney about appointments. And I wasn't surprised when the people zooming in said, Monty, you know, she didn't even answer Commissioner Sharp's question. Two hundred eleven billion, thirty-four million. We'll see you next week. I'll be wearing my hat.
Hello. Excuse me, hello, my name is Noah Johnston, I live at six 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 Charbel Street in District Three, Hickson. I was at the Planning Commission meeting on Monday because I was seeking clarity about the plat moratorium. And RPA did, representatives from RPA did talk to me afterwards to explain some of the reasons why the Commission on Monday was able to approve new plaits, even though we're under the moratorium. And there's information on their website, they posted a great memo that explains the point that they made to me also, including information like, for purposes of this temporary moratorium, new subdivision plats shall be considered to be those developments, meeting the definition of a major subdivision requiring the submittal of a preliminary subdivision plat. They also specify that this primarily refers to the application for the plat. But the words of the resolution say new plat shall, no new plat shall be accepted by the Regional Planning Agency or approved by the Regional Planning Commission beginning July second. And Commissioner Baker, I feel like, did make an attempt to clarify that point when he was asked about it when the resolution was brought forward. So I'm just still not understanding, also, there was this mention of the the sixty-day automatic approval that will take place for a plat that was, that was brought to question and how that might influence this whole moratorium. So I guess I'm just left confused. There were plaits listed under new business, one of them was a preliminary plat. It was the one on Profit Lane, which I do have here, of course, I'm fumbling through these papers, because I'm sorry, I'm not used to doing this sort of thing. HCSD twenty dash twenty-five dash thirty-four, that was approved with conditions, it's listed under new business. It's titled a preliminary plat. According to the resolution, we are in the midst of a new plat moratorium. So what gave the Commission the authority to approve that plat? If we are under a moratorium, the, all of these additional definitions are being derived from the Tennessee Code, as far as I understand, and that supersedes things. But I looked at what was referenced as it refers to that, and all I could find was the reference of that sixty-day automatic approval thing, which I still just don't see how that affects a thirty-day resolution.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you, since this is a presentation time, Commissioner Chauncey, you want to do this following, or you want to do it now, or what would you like to do?
I'll tell you what, go over to Mr. Schultz over there, guy in the corner, he'll tell you, explain everything to you in full detail and get all your questions answered, how's that? Mr. Schultz?
It's, this, if I may, would be a repeat of what already happened on Monday for me. I did already hear what the RPA has to say about it.
Okay, so I'll try to briefly explain it to you really quickly. So two things, the line items that you're discussing, there's a, it says down at the bottom, it says Hamilton County, or it says Chattanooga City. So if it says Chattanooga City, then that involves the city of Chattanooga. If it says county only, then, okay, yeah, that discusses, that's us. And all of those items that were on the agenda for Monday were already items that were already applications that had been filled out prior to the moratorium. The moratorium only takes place on the applications that were submitted after July first. So all those agenda items that you read on Monday were submitted prior to July first. Okay?
But the, but the resolution says, or approve. It, it, it says applications, but also or approve. And that seems pretty explicit. Yeah, I'm talking about the resolution.
I'm sorry, the moratorium, the verbiage in the moratorium?
The verbiage in the moratorium, yeah.
Well.
And I, I understand that we're not all on the same page about the moratorium, and I have no, I have no interest in discussing.
There was some clarification that was sent out by RPA, I think, like twenty-four hours after that moratorium was voted on, that laid out, that clarified some of the discrepancies in the verbiage, some misunderstandings, and that was posted on RPA website. I don't have that in front of me, sir, so I can't read it to you. But again, after this meeting, we're going to move on, we're going to move on. Go back to that guy back there in the corner, he'll answer any questions you have, okay? That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. What I can do is Commissioner Baker is also the one that sponsored that resolution, so Mr. Trish, if you'll get his contact information, let's make sure Mr. Baker gets ahold of him. Okay, also, Commissioner Smith is?
Yeah, I'd love to speak with you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that. Commissioner Sharp, do you have something to add? Well, Chairman, I just find it interesting, I had the same question. So I appreciate you bringing the question to us. It was a bit confusing to me as well, and I think it speaks to a broader problem that we have in a county, and that's, you know, something that we've been working on, I don't know, for two years with regard to compliance, policies, procedures, resolution codification, various measures within county government that, you know, hold us to what we have all agreed upon and those before us. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the gentleman to come and ask that question, because I too share those questions. It did not make sense to me. So maybe I need to join the pow-wow, because I don't, I don't understand it either. And for the record, I did not support the moratorium. I voted in opposition to the moratorium. So I'm not advocating for moratorium, but we need to follow our rules. We need to follow the law. Right? And just because it's okay with someone that might be sitting in a seat does not make it legal or appropriate, as we've discussed with other issues today. So, you know, I mean, I think it's a very valid question and something I hope that we can work on moving forward. Oftentimes, I believe we move fast and loose, and, you know, people look to us to hold to our word. And I appreciate the comments, and Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Okay, you're welcome. Would, your time is up. Your, your time is up, so thank you. Commissioner Shipley?
Yes, I'd stepped out, what was this gentleman's name?
Noah Johnston.
Johnston. You look familiar, you don't have no rezoning over on Nelson Road. You're not. You're not the one that did that.
Okay. Okay. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might not remember this exactly correct either from last week, so we may need to look at the minutes to confirm this, but I do believe that Mr. Schultz asked Commissioner Baker if this moratorium would apply to all previously submitted plats. And the answer was, "It will apply to all of them, everything." So, even those that were submitted prior to the moratorium, it would apply. Now, again, I could be wrong, but we need to verify in the minutes, because I believe that question was asked, and I believe Mr. Schultz would be happy to get your confirmation on that. But if the intent of Commissioner Baker, who submitted the resolution, was that it applied to all, not just, including those that had already been submitted, we need to, we need to make sure that we're adhering to that.
Well, I think.
If that was the intent.
I think the minutes, Brooke's going to pull the minutes up, so we can kind of.
I can quote the minutes right here.
There's a reason I'm asking for an official.
Sure.
I can confirm that it states in the June 25th, 2025 recess meeting minutes, it does state that it was noted this resolution only applies to the unincorporated areas of Hamilton County. Commissioner Baker stated it should read for 30 days with the ability to extend. I'm now looking for the comments with RPA between Baker and RPA. It says right here, "In response to Brian Schultz, Director of Development Services, Commissioner Baker stated this resolution will go into effect on July 2nd, 2025, so no new plats can be approved for 30 days."
So, the statement was no new plats could be approved. Brian, what this gentleman is discussing, does it, does it follow those same?
Yes, and we had actually, after that meeting on Thursday, myself, Karen Renick, Chairman of the Planning Commission, Ethan Collier, County Attorney, Ms. Varnell, we all met to get some more clarity on that, what the resolution was and what it was spelled out. And we, that's what that memo I drafted from legal opinion did not apply to those plats that had been submitted in April for the June or July Plan Commission meeting. It did not apply to those. It only applied to ones that were being submitted after July 2nd.
Okay, now may.
Previously submitted prior to July 2nd, we could act on them.
Okay, so that was legal opinion on what was done?
Yes, that's what the memo on our website states.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, may I ask the Commissioner that introduced the resolution if that was his intent, since it was his resolution?
Sure.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes, it was.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Commissioner Chauncey?
I'm sorry, Chairman. I thought I turned my light off. I'm fine.
Okay, all right. All right, with no other business, we will be in recess until July 30th at 9:30 a.m.